Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 16, 2017. We're going to take one case out of order. This is on the zoning calendar, new cases, item number seven, 2017-146BZ, 3722 Neptun Avenue, Brooklyn. This is a build-it-back project.
Good morning, Alicia Yabsley for Bowler Fluger Architects.
Hi. Is there anything you wanted to say? Otherwise, we'll continue.
The application, we feel, is fairly straightforward. This is a masonry-framed building which doesn't allow for the typical elevation process that we provide. As a result, the only way to provide a FEMA-compliant first level is to abandon and rebuild on top. Due to that factor, we are not able to use 64723 to allow the non-conforming side yards to remain. Therefore, we're seeking relief of the existing non-conforming side yard.
Okay. And also, you've requested a waiver of the BSA rules such as 30-day notice and referral to the community board and advice to affected property owners, et cetera. So are there any comments from the community on this? No. Oh, there is another speaker? Right. Please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Steven Levine, RA. I'm the special technical advisor to the Department of Design and Construction. I would just like to add a few other comments to augment what Alicia just said, that one of the practical difficulty here is we have an existing exterior masonry bearing wall structure. It's very difficult and it's not feasible to elevate this. And really, the crux of the problem is that under the 64723, we can elevate to the DFA. Our problem is, we're going to utilize the existing first floor, which is two feet approximately above the DFA. If we were able to use Section 64723, we would be permitted to keep the non-compliant side yards in total side yards. But because we can't, that's our dilemma, and that's why we're coming here before the board to seek relief. There will be no change in the footprint. There will be no change or negatively adversely affect the adjacent properties or the community. In fact, other homes are also being elevated to the new floodplain elevations. And I can attest to that because I have been to the sites and I have walked around the community, and it will not be out of character, and I'd like you to consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Any comments from commissioners? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close this. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, special order calendar, continued hearing items, item number one, 12093BZ, 222-19, Linden Boulevard, Queens. Do you have your schedule?
Good morning, Faye Ambatan for Cheneau Bell, PC, for the applicant. We got news last night at like around five that the trees were planted, but it was too late for a submission, and the hearing was already adjourned. So I'd like, if possible, as soon as possible, for a submission date.
Okay, let's see, just a second. What, as soon as possible, because she actually would have had a submission today.
Yes, we're adjourned.
It's mostly to check on the landscaping and planting.
You can do June 6th on this?
Okay. So if it's June 6th, then you submit everything? Could you submit everything already?
I would just need to go out and take the photographs.
Photos, okay.
Because we just had on a cellphone picture to show that the owner had planted it. So if I could go out sometime later this week or early next week to take a photograph.
Okay, so in that case, you think you could submit by Friday?
Then 19th?
19th?
I think that I shouldn't be able to do that.
Were there any other issues that were outstanding that you needed to respond to?
No, there was just an updated zoning analysis for each frontage, which I showed at the last hearing and then formally submitted.
Okay.
I think we're supposed to submit photos of the entire section.
Right, that's why I'm going to go out there and take the photographs.
Right. So it's June 6th with a submission on May 19th?
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Item number two, 12997BZ, 150-65 Cross Island Parkway, Queens. Is applications requested to be withdrawn? Right, so do we vote on it?
Yeah.
So for a motion to withdraw? Withdraw without prejudice? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number three, 16998BZ, 3141 Bailey Avenue, The Bronx.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner of the board and public. Would first like to respond to some of the--
Say your name, please.
Robert Stahl, architect. I'm representing the owner. Would first like to respond to some issues raised yesterday's executive review session, and I would also like to discuss my conversation with the owner last night. I have known the owner for many years, and after viewing the executive review session, he said that like you, he has enough with his tenant and will be taking care of all the items that we agree on today. Number one, replaced with six-foot-high opaque fence, except for the wrought iron fence within the brick wall. We'd like to discuss the fence area and a potential safety problem with an opaque fence at that corner. As the street wraps around the site and the park sits to the north, a completely opaque fence would make it visually hard to see when maneuvering vehicles. Also, police and fire typically like to be able to see through fencing in retail areas to see what's happening in those areas.
Sorry, what do you mean by that? They want to see what's going on behind the fence?
If anybody is, you know, because a six-foot fence, you could just climb over, they want to be able to see any activity that's within the area. Police, you know, driving by, going by, likes, like to be able to see. In fact, a lot of retail spaces where they have gates, they have, they don't use opaque gates anymore. They have slats so you can see into the retail stores. This is just a, this is just an observation by me. I'm not saying that--
Right.
This is just a, this is up for discussion. We've come up with three examples, if I could show them to you. I'm not, you know, again, this is just--
Thank you. So what if, I know what we're looking at. What's the purpose of--
Well, you know, these are not the fences at the site. This is just, these are--
These are just ideas--
Examples, ideas of what we could do, and I have no--
Well, only one of, three of them are on the paint, but one of them is not. So your concern was regarding opaque fence.
Well, even these, you know, although they give an opaque appearance, you could actually see through them if you go closer.
Which one are you referring to?
Even the PVC, sir?
No, the PVC, you can't, no.
The photograph number four? Oh, PVC is the white one. Which is number two?
PVC is number two.
I didn't even see that.
Well, if you want to see, I mean, part of the problem--
This was just showing some fences, including an opaque fence or including partially, what we would call partially opaque.
Well, we often see these types of fences with the slating that's woven into the chain link. That's a pretty common approach, the number four. So that's probably the standard if, when we're trying to conceal the use. Otherwise, when we're trying to, you know, another option, but it's probably not an option on your site, is you use a wrought iron fence, and then there's planting behind it, and that conceals the use.
Or you keep the site immaculately clean.
Right.
But your site is not.
If I was, if I was a tenant at that site, it would be immaculately clean.
You know now. So, I mean, I think the preference--
What is it?
Number four. Is number four, right?
Great, thank you.
Okay, so--
So we will, we will prepare a, we will adjust the submittal for that.
Okay.
Okay. Then you have, okay, the, last time I was at the site, there was still a top line there. I was not happy about that. I believe it's a new top line, which is, after telling them to remove it, and I agree with you, they have a top line there, and that's supposed to do work outside, is doing work outside. So they're going to be removed. Okay, that's my, that is my position, and the owner's position. Cleanup site, I still, the owner was told that the site was 100% cleaned up. Obviously, it was not, because we have photos to prove that, and the owner was told that they have some equipment back there, but it's, there is some equipment, there's also garbage. So they are going to clean up, and, you know, we're going to make that a zero tolerance. Maneuverability plans, we submitted those, and that's for your review.
But you didn't show the curb cut. You show curb cut to be removed on your, even on your maneuverability plan, you show the curved cut to be removed.
There's a title.
Yeah, it's, but it's on all the plans.
Okay, okay, so these two curb cuts were the original curb cuts that were Larry's, Larry, okay, Larry Dolphino, say who you are. Larry Dolphino, I'm the project manager. I believe these curb cuts were in the original BSA case.
Right.
Hi.
State your name, please.
Larry Dolphino, project architect for Robert J. Stahl. Both curb cuts were originally approved on the original BSA case and billing department filing.
All one.
And originally, we were thinking about removing the second curb cut, but under discussion and because of the circulation plan, we're going to keep it. So this note is incorrect.
Right.
This will be taken out.
Okay, so you will be keeping the second curb?
Yes, yes.
It'll make the circulation be impossible without the second curb.
Right, that's kind of what we noticed when we were in the--
Yeah, I don't know, I missed it, I didn't see.
And their maneuverability shows it's the only way you can get out of the site, and so, okay, so you need to correct that. What else did we observe?
And then, plant show, plant show and landscape, fencing and lighting, we will submit in the next submittal. And the issue with the tire rack, it's my opinion from when we visited the site, that there's no tire rack anymore.
So they don't--
Not outside or inside. They still replace tires, they still fix tires, but I think they just get rid of them, you know, instead of saving them to get rid of them, they get rid of them.
So no websites, storage of tires?
I did not see any tires on the, I may have seen a couple of tires on the outside, but it didn't look like they were there for long. There's no tire rack. There used to be a big tire rack with, you know, 40 tires probably, and unsightly, that's gone.
Okay.
But looking into the garage itself, I did not see any tire rack either.
Okay. Did you see new tires stacked in the garage?
I did see some tires in the garage, but I don't recall a tire rack. I'm usually pretty observant.
Now, I'm just curious, if they replace tires, they need to have some stock in order to do that.
Yeah, because I thought it was for display of new tires also.
Okay, I don't want to mistake myself. I would like to be sure before I say something.
You'll verify, okay.
And then I will, in the next submittal, I will state it in my comments.
Okay. And then in terms of landscaping, what we're trying to do always is protect the adjacent properties, right? So that's where you might put landscaping along the--
On the south side of the site, there's a, I believe there's a four-story building, it's like a warehouse building, and it's just, it's just a wall without any windows. It's a commercial building, wall without any windows.
So then, in that case, maybe the plant, so could the planting go along the brick wall, or where else could we put anything?
Well, the planting on the brick wall, on that brick wall, wouldn't really be used
For shield.
Anybody looking out of that building, you know, would actually be, would enhance people that are working at the site, probably, you know. You know, I could see it on the, on the side where it's facing the park.
Yeah.
On the, on the, on the south side.
Where the tire rack used to be?
Where the tire rack used, yeah, I think, I think planting would be nicer than a tire rack.
So are you suggesting maybe moving the fence in a little bit and leaving some area outside the fence for planting, or?
Well, the city already has plants on the sidewalk.
You're talking about the street tree?
The street trees, yes.
So you know what you could do, could also do, for instance, wrought iron fencing, I don't know if this is an idea--
And then, I'm sorry to interrupt, there's also, it's a wall, it's actually a masonry wall with a fence on top.
Which is?
On the--
Yeah, the--
Where the tire rack?
On the north side.
On a tire rack.
Yeah, no, that I know. But where the tire rack was, if you did it planting along there, then you either, putting planting on the outside isn't usually what we do because it's off property, I mean, it's outside of your, let's say, control.
That may be, you would have to actually do it. The city has a program for planting on that sidewalk.
No, I don't mean on the sidewalk. I mean on your property. So one option is that you do, say, wrought iron fencing on that side where the tire rack was, and you put planting there, and then you have opaicked, because the planting conceals the, what's going on inside, right? And then the balance of it is the opaque fencing. That's--
Slats, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, on the, on the, let's call it the tire rack side, okay, that's great.
The 233rd side, because, yeah.
Okay, so I think that would, that would work. I think, I think that would, that would work, yeah. And also, that's facing the park, I think that would be, that would work.
Okay, so wrought iron and planting on the interior. And the idea of the planting is there are low dense shrubs, right? So they grow to the height of the fence.
And the wrought iron would match the wrought iron top of the wall.
Correct.
So that whole side would be consistent--
Yeah.
--in design.
Good, okay.
Can I just come fall back? We'll look at--
No, it's not that you're pulling the fence back. The fence stays on your property line. The planting is inside the property.
Because this is where you can see through the fence. So it's whatever you need to plant. Unless there's any other questions, I'm--
No, okay. And then I think, didn't we need lighting? Isn't that?
Yeah, there was a question about lighting--
Yeah, we need to make sure that your lighting is not spilling over onto adjacent properties or onto the street, right? So usually, you show a lumen spread diagram.
We did not show lighting, and we will, we will.
Okay. And, okay, just a second. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay. Okay, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, again, so you're actually going to do this work, right? Do we need to see plants on the interim? I think it will slow things down. We understand that we're going to have on the, sorry--
No, you could--
Bailey Avenue, sorry?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
On the Bailey Avenue side, there will be chain link with the black opaking slats. Ditto for the gate, gate treated the same way. And on the west 233rd Street side, there'll be wrought iron fence that runs up against, to the brick wall. And then behind that will be an in-ground planting, this is in-ground planting, right?
Bed.
Yeah, in-ground planting bed with shrubs that grow to six feet, densely planted.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a--
Yeah, I mean, I think they should just do that.
Yeah, you should just do that work.
Plan.
Right, I don't want to have you come back with yet another plan, right? But you need to correct the drawings to show this--
Yes.
Yeah.
And to show the curb cut to be retained, and to ensure that the lighting doesn't spill over onto the street. So if there is lighting there, show the lumen spread.
We'll, we'll give you an analysis of the lighting of existing versus what we propose if it has to be changed.
Okay. Anything else, do I leave anything else? Okay, so say you need a couple of months to do this work?
Yeah, probably, yes.
Okay, so how about the end of July, do we have?
July 25th.
Okay, how about July 25th? Is that enough time?
Couple of more weeks, I think.
Okay, end of August?
Thank you, Robert.
August 22.
Thank you.
Okay, August 22 with an August 2 submission of photographs of the entire site, all beautified.
Thank you.
Okay, and if you do that, we could actually be done with this.
That'll be great.
So that would be good, right?
That'll make me and my company better.
Okay, we would too.
I know, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. New cases, item number four, 18385BZ, 2068 20th Street, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Eric Palatnik. We attended the review session yesterday, and we have some handouts for you. We put together an aerial that shows the surrounding uses, and we have the community board's recommendation for you as well, so we'll pass that over to--
Just give it over there. Did we get the community board on this? Community board recommendation?
We have it coming right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
They're catching on in the office, they'll collate them for me one day. I'm lucky enough, everything's produced and set up. All right, good morning. So we just passed up to you an aerial, which I left with you. That aerial shows you the chicken slaughterhouse, these to the left. It's still there. It was there in 1985, and it still exists today. And the uses around us still exist as they were probably in 1985, including a residential building behind us and a residential building to our right. And interestingly enough, when I was talking to Alicia of my office, because she went to the community board, the community board recommendation, she said to me, "They want it there, they love this thing, they don't want new development."
Oh.
So that was, you know, we all have our devils in life--
That's a good question.
And I guess, you know, something that's somewhat docile, these guys probably pull out of there in the morning, they're not around all day, and people would rather have their light and air in the back than a new building, so--
Do you know actually how the site is used?
The site is a contractor's establishment, and they go out throughout the day, and it's inside, as you can see, it's just got the trucks that they bring in, and then go out during the day, the guys go out for the day, and there's an office. There are deliveries during the day at times when goods and materials come for a job. Loading on the sidewalk was occurring, as you witnessed, it was occurring from the property across the street, which is the subject, the companion application to this application, that's trailed behind it a little bit, but it'll be coming for you. The people there, it's not the owner, I represent the owner of both buildings, they're different tenants, and the tenants had made an arrangement with each other so that they could, you know, get the shipments in, so--
Why is it a companion application? It's not--
Well, it's not really companion, it's just around the same time, the property across the street, I don't have the address in front of me, it's the same owner, and they were granted the variances around the same time in the 80s. So they're coming through on renewals about, I call them companion applications, because they've been traveling historically together.
That's a wholesale beverage?
It's a wholesale beverage. You'll be seeing that, an application is filed here, and for whatever reason, it got caught up in a couple of issues, it's trailing behind. So we were unaware that the tenants were doing that. It's not a landlord-induced thing, it's the landlord just collects rent checks and doesn't do anything on the property, make sure that they maintain and everything. So we are making sure that they no longer have that arrangement with each other. Also, the graffiti, we're asking them to clean up the graffiti. You had a question about the fence that's on the roof, it's old-school Brooklyn, you know, it's, you know, it's an open contractor's yard, it's probably outlived its, its purpose. It was probably put up there, from the looks of it, in the 70s, when people probably pretty quickly jumped over a fence to steal whatever they could.
Right.
That's not happening these days, to the same extent, although there still are bed eggs out there in the world. I don't think we need a fence or a barbed wire.
No, no. So they're willing to--
They were willing to remove the barbed wire, the owner wanted to ask if he could keep the fence, but if he couldn't keep the fence, we would accept--
I mean, obviously--
It's a leftover and all the time.
It's an open, open storage of valuable stuff, so, yeah, so it sounds like a reasonable thing to have something that prevents people from going in and helping themselves, especially because you could, I think you could stand on the truck and lift the--
You can get over pretty easily, yeah.
Supplies right over.
You can get over pretty easily.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure the barbed wire went up, because people did do that in the past.
Yeah.
But we'll make sure, the barbed wire should be off. Every time I see barbed wire on the city, it makes me think of 1977.
Right.
You know, it's when it was probably needed.
And the owner has indicated the barbed wire is not necessary.
No, no, it's, it's not a problem anymore, it's all rusted out, it's been up there for decades, probably. So we'll remove that, and we'll give you pictures, and you have the community board approval, and--
I mentioned about the compressed gas storage.
Oh, yes.
It's on photo number three.
Yeah, I saw it.
It's just those tanks, you know, they're supposed to be in a secure thing, so they can't fall over, stored properly, you know, not within all the rest of the--
I'm sure they pulled it off of a truck after a day welding something and stuck it there, and we'll make sure that it's, it's in the right spot and it's secure.
I also thought the masonry on the front of the building needed some repair, hatchwork, especially around the man gate.
We'll make sure they clean up the whole building.
The front of the building could use a painting, yeah.
They'll paint it, they'll get off the graffiti, they'll take down the barbed wire.
It looks like they put some sort of tiles on top of concrete, and the tiles around the man, manway are falling off. Whatever they had it for.
And also, actually, on the interior of the site, it could use a little attention, like painting, because people can actually look inside from their, from the residential--
Yeah, you mean the back of the building?
Yeah, the, actually, the walls that are dividing the property, on the property line, they're just--
You want the exterior walls, or you want the interior of the wall?
The interior, so it's the concrete block walls that are on the property line, they're in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, and they could see in from the buildings above.
Yeah.
I'll ask them to spruce it up and clean it up.
Yeah.
If you give them a couple of months to do that, just so they can get, because sure, asking a contractor to move stuff away from a wall is probably slower than getting a contractor to come back to your house after the job is done.
And then, could you just give us photos of the interior?
Of the, like the offices?
Yeah.
And their storage area?
Offices are--
Yeah, I see there's some offices and some storage, yeah.
One of the reasons for that question was whether some of the exterior storage could be moved inside, but I, you know, the approval for, is for exterior storage for contractors' establishment, so, you know, the issue is really that the residential neighbors next door can look down, so to the extent that it can be--
Cleaned up and--
Cleaned up and prettified, yeah, that's an odd request for--
We'll try to, if it gives you any consolation, I was going through the record on it, it looks like it's been a junkyard for, you know, pretty much going back in time. I think it was when the board acted on it, it was an enlargement of a junk and scrap, junkyard and scrap here.
Right.
So it's probably better than that, but, and better than the chicken place, but we'll ask them, and I saw the pictures, the place looks like it has an coat of paint on it, like my office, which isn't about too long.
Are you coming back for an extension?
Sort of like this room. It's due for a paint job. Due for a paint job, so I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's, any other comments from the commissioners? Any speakers on this? Okay, so it's really just to do some fix-up, right?[1727.44]
Yeah, if it would please the board, if it's possible, if we could submit in about a month, give them a month to do all that, a month and a half maybe, and I'm asking for July 25, because I'm out of town in August for a couple of weeks, in July for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that works. July 25 with a submission on July 12.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, July 5, sorry.
July 5. We'll get that to you the week before.
Okay.
Nobody wants to spend July 4 reading our submissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, 195BZ, 117 South Avenue, 7th Avenue, South Manhattan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended your review session yesterday, and I've spoken with Mrs. Caduto. There were two objections that have just been recently issued by the fire department. One had to do with a self-closing fire door. I received an email last night that they fixed the door, there was something with the alignment, and I just got an email, so we can provide something shortly. And the individual went to for a distributed fitness test yesterday, got 67 out of 70, he's going to try again today. So we should be able to, hopefully he'll get his 70 today or tomorrow. So I would say we need a little bit of time if you want this cleared up before the decision.
Okay. So, any other issues? Any speakers on this? Okay. So, and fire department's okay if those things are met? Okay. So what do we say? How much time do you need?
I would probably need a couple of weeks to be able to present it to you, so...
Okay, so it's nothing for us to review, it's fire department, we can do it.
Two weeks is...
A July decision, I mean, July date is fine.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not...
July date, we can do July 18.
July 18, is that okay?
Yeah.
So July 18 would be June 28 submission.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And potentially it's closed, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're leaving it open because of the question for the fire department.
No problem.
Okay.
Item number six, 7595BZ, 1635, 3rd Avenue, Manhattan.
Good morning again, Frederick A. Becker. We, at your review session, I spoke with Mrs. Caduto. It appears that we're okay on sprinklers, and we have to just get the fire department approval issued. We believe it's there. I showed Mrs. Caduto some approval, but that was just for an approved plan, he said. So I imagine we potentially have that approval somewhere.
Okay, what's confusing to me is the drawings, the approved drawings indicate that there were fire alarms installed.
Yeah.
The new drawings indicate the F3 use, which really is normally, I believe, the assembly area, is fully sprinkled, is it?
We believe, we show sprinklers, yes, we have a sprinkler sign-off.
Okay, okay. So that's, yeah.
Good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners, Anthony Caduto for the fire department. So the building itself is fully sprinkled, operational, everything's good there. The fire alarm systems, there was an existing systems, but then there's the new systems that they're putting in. The engineering looks like it's done and approved, but they have to get those final tests, so, like all other cases in this matter, once they actually make application for the test, we would have no objection for the board to move ahead to a vote. But we, as of this point, no appointment has been made.
Okay, great.
And as I say, for all that I know, it may, I'm not contradicting, but we, I was referring to something that took place 10 years ago for an approval, and things may be in place, I'll find out.
Right. Yeah, but so if the fire alarms are being updated, that implies that they're not actually operational, because you're making connections.
I will find, I understand not arguing with that.
Okay, so how much more time do you think they need?
About the same day.
Really? So they'll be, you think they'll be finished with the work and have scheduled tests?
Actually, the voters, yeah, by, yes.
Okay. Okay, so the same day, July 18, with a submission on June 28, and if you're a little late on the submission, what's critical is fire department sign-off?
Got it.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, item number seven, 20164253A, 565 St. John's Place, Brooklyn.
I saw the look when it even came up, I know what's happening. Hi, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we've heard your board's extreme concerns with respect to this application, which is why we're requesting the adjournment, because there are certain people that would like to be here today that could not be here, and we'd like them to come to attest to your board and to at least give their side of what has occurred. We know that the board sees skepticism with respect to the accounting methodology that was used for the payment structure, and we'd like the bookkeepers and the people that were coordinating the payments to be here, because the methodology, although not necessarily an orthodox accounting methodology, is a completely legal methodology, and was done as a system of bartering, which is often done in communities like this, where there is a bartering system, and it's sort of a, to use a Yiddish term, cockamamie bartering system, but it is a bartering system nonetheless. I mean, the, 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 right, the stuff up top is there, it was paid for, the firm, you could see the park developers and the building supply company are name-brand, city-certified lumber, is a well-known Brooklyn building supply company that is very well-known in the Brooklyn area, their trucks are everywhere. So I think that, I'm just trying to not retort or say that the board is not right or sound or correct or proper, and you're questioning what we have provided to you, you're certainly within your rights, but I would like the courtesy of having the time, and we'll bring them to explain their cockamamie accounting system.
So, in addition to the cockamamie accounting, the cockamamie construction?
Well, the cockamamie construction, yes, the roof, yes, yes. It's a few cockamamie things. The roof, of course, the addition was built, as we know, was larger than it should have been, and we apologize that our office really was not so clear on that when the application came in, there was no intention to see...
Not just the roof, the entire...
Yeah, the entire, I meant the enlarged, I meant the enlarged structure at the roof, and we apologize, I could have been clearer in presenting it to you, and probably a little bit more knowledgeable. But now that it's out, and you're aware of it, you're right to question, it wasn't on the original permit. The original permit was for a much smaller addition on the roof.
Or the approved plans.
A seven, unapproved plans were for a 740, not much more, a 741 square foot smaller addition. So we're going to come back to you, what we've been working on and trying to develop and going to come back to you with, hopefully, is some evidence to show that that enlargement would be a proper post-approval amendment to the Department of Buildings, and we're, I know you're shaking your head, but we're hoping to show you that, we might not be able to, but I'm hoping to. And we're also hoping to show you in a more finite, calculated process, I understood you didn't, you didn't, we're not liking of the way we did the math with reducing the 25% in the numbers so as to get to our loss, and that you'd like to see an actual itemized mathematical calculation, we'll do that for you. So we're, I'm explaining all this because we're clear on all of your concerns, crystal clear, and there are what we believe are some valid justifications for it. If you feel at the end of the day that what we're presenting to you is not proper, of course, you should do what you feel is right, but, you know, I don't want, I think your concerns were being unheard, and that we're just sort of, you know, keep going and just giving you what we got.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, early is this July, do we have July?
July 25 would be a great date for me, or the week after in August.
Uh, the 25th will work.
Okay, because it's going to be a lot to review, just like...
Yeah, there'll be a lot to review, and we're not...
I think we're okay on the 25th, we only have one other, and it's, it's not Broadway.
Really, the only thing you're going to have to review, by the way, the numbers.
It might be not coming back.
The numbers are going to be the only thing we'll really...
I'll watch the variances on that, that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there shouldn't be too much new substantive, I mean, brain-curdling information coming in. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be the numbers more, it'll be the numbers more clearly spelled out, and either we'll have an approval from DOB, or some indication that the post-approval amendment could be done, or we won't. There won't be...
Oh, so you think that's enough time for you to actually get some sort of determination from DOB?
Yes, yeah, they've been working on it already. They're trying to find a system.
Regarding the PAA?
Regarding the PAA. It's, you know, DOB has become very strict in what they'll opine on these days, so we're...
Sure.
We are having...
But it's only giving you essentially two months to get a PAA?
They've already started doing it, though. They've already started the conversation, so...
Okay.
Did you used to work at DOB? I don't know. I see the lens. It's a great agency, Department of Buildings, we love it.
He's got a very big smile on his face about July 25.
I mean, this place is fine.
No, I'm looking more at Terrell and his reaction to DOB's review by July 25. Okay, so anyway...
The other thing was that if you don't get the approval of DOB to, I guess, show us some precedent regarding vesting of work that was completely contrary to the permit and the application.
We will.
Yeah.
I know that's your concern.
Right. DOB's opinion on that subject, which we haven't actually heard, yeah.
Yeah, they've been surprisingly quiet this entire application.
They've been what?
Very quiet throughout this app, this particular application, so...
They're not, yeah.
We'd love to have them in on the conversation, so we'll start, we'll instigate the conversation also.
We need to get DOB, we have to reach out to DOB ourselves.
Sure, yeah, we have to reach out.
Well, oh, and, oh, yeah, and also that MDL, Article 5 or Article 7?
Article 5, the architect will be here to discuss, why, the engineer will be here to discuss.
So as long as you're at DOB, because we actually don't think that the, we don't understand the architect's argument, no matter how many times he says it, we see the ZRD1, we don't think that it was carefully reviewed, it actually makes no sense. So it should be a question that's specifically asked in a ZRD1?
We will.
So I'm thinking that's longer, because the ZRD1 is a long time, because that actually goes to the entire heart of the question. If it's an Article 7 building, you can't have this addition at all.
So maybe if we could have a hearing on August 8, give us a couple more weeks.
Okay, August 8. For a submission on July 19, may not be at this time either, but let's see what you can do.
The ZRD1.
That's what I mean, the ZRD1.
But that's the type of thing that they could submit when they get, when they get it.
Yes, of course, but I...
Yeah, with every law, if it's an approval, that's like an easy review.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And if it's in denial, it's an easy approval, it's an easy review also.
We'll discuss it here and get direction.
It's only not easy if it's not acted on, right? Which isn't, we're pushing it back a couple of weeks, so...
Yeah? Okay. All right, so we set up the date then, right? August 8, and submit July 19.
Thank you.
Okay.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number eight, 4415BZ, 145 Central Park North, Manhattan.
This is a request to withdraw. They decided to go ahead with that ASAP right, because there's some changes in the zoning, so for a motion to withdraw.
Chair promoter?
Uh, it doesn't really matter, without prejudice, but I don't know why it matters.
It was closed.
It was closed.
So we would need a, we would need a rationale for why it would be withdrawn without prejudice. And I think, I think that the rationale, that it, that you have an ASAP right project, that, I mean, it doesn't matter, if the building has a right, you could, you could withdraw with prejudice, and it doesn't matter.
Right.
But I think that the, that the ZQA changes justify a withdrawal without prejudice.
Right.
The only outstanding issues were the leave of hazardous materials analysis that just wasn't done.
Oh, right, otherwise, yeah, okay.
Yeah, for fun.
Okay. All right, so a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number nine, 8815BZ, 1834 East 21st Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Mira Altman from the office of Mira Altman. Lower this where the short people are. All right. So we heard your comments from yesterday's executive session, there was a question regarding the roof. There was actually a very good reason why the architect did what he did.
Okay.
And if you look at this page...
This was closed, so we need to reopen.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry about that.
So for a motion to reopen. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
I'm so excited to explain the rationale.
Okay.
Let's hear it. If you look at this page, A121, which is the zoning diagram, what you will see is this roof line right here was continued along the same plane, but the building got wider. So when he took the same angle and put it on the other portion, that was where the ridge line met. That is why the ridge line shifts and why the roof was done that way. He thought it was the cleanest way, and it's something that's done very commonly in Brooklyn on a lot of these houses. I don't know if it's happened recently with houses, but it's something that I have a lot of my clients do.
Yeah.
When they're just doing a rear enlargement and they don't want to touch the roof line, how do you make a wider building in the back?
You just push it on.
So...
No, no, he thought, let's keep the same ridge line.
She shouldn't need the ridge line.
It's something that is done very commonly on a lot of houses.
What? Say again?
I mean, I understand why they did it that way.
No, I understand why they did it, our comments were that it was an awkward connection between the building and the other building. I mean, it's really just taking the box and slamming it against the other box, you know, there are other ways of doing it.
I spoke at the architect yesterday, he stands by his design...
He wants to slam it against the other building. Okay. Yeah, I mean, but that is...
I spoke to him regarding waterproofing as well, and he said he's not concerned about that, he is prepared for that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just not pretty.
Okay. All right, so any other comments on that? Commissioner Montanez?
No.
All right, so for a motion to close?
Motion to close? Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Anna Brudry Grant? Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, continued hearings, 24014BZ, 1620 Shore Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Did I send that to you?
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Not that anyone wants to delay this longer, but can we do a second call, because we're hoping to have an architect representative here, and I don't think he's arrived yet.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you, yeah, that'll be good. Okay.
So the next?
Yeah, you can, the next one, we're going to do a second call.
Item number 11, 30214BZ, 4504 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. We're hoping to see an adjournment. We actually have a meeting this week with the architect to address some of the issues, and actually a revised plan, it would be possible demolition of the existing building, so if we could get eight to 10 weeks to submit, but flexible based on... So if we could get eight to 10 weeks to submit, but flexible based on the-
Yeah, because if it's a possible demolition, that's a big-
It would change the plans.
Yeah, that's a lot of potential work. It seems like it should be more than-
So you'd rather have the flexibility just in case the plans are changed.
How about we put this for September? I don't think that's bad. I'm just seeing, you're meeting with the architect, you're discussing whether you might demolish the building. It changes a lot of analysis, right?
That's fine. I was thinking last week of August, but September is short.
Okay. Well, it could also be August 22nd, but it seems to me that if you have a submission, if you have a September 12 hearing, then you have a submission on August 23rd as opposed to a submission on August 2nd.
I actually think just because of other items going on, the earlier ones probably better. So if we could do the August 22nd.
All right. So August 22nd?
Submit August 2nd?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So which one are we going to now?
Oh, we're going to just keep going until-
His client is-
If clients come and then we'll do-
Okay. Item number 12, 2515 BZ, 71 Lewis Avenue, Brooklyn. It's actually adjourned, presser adjourned.
Anybody here for this?
No.
Okay. So they requested an adjournment. We don't know by how long. So we're, it's all street parking, so we need, it takes time.
Yeah. August 8th?
August 8th. Okay. Is that good?
That looks good.
Okay. So submission date is July 19th. Okay.
Item number 13, 5615 BZ, 2124 Avenue J, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning again, Eric Palatnick. We have created revised plans overnight as well as have the Sanborn map, your clearer Sanborn map that you're asked for.
That's the, that was the only outstanding issue, I think. What's?
The revised plan.
Why do we have the revised plan?
You wanted sheet 13. We gave them, my office copied the whole thing. They're very good at copying. Collating, on the other hand.
This is much clearer.
Did you email it?
Excuse me?
Eric, did you email this?
E13. I'll email it to the board also.
Yeah. Because if we're going to vote on this-
You already emailed it, right?
Submitted it.
I believe. Did she email it?
We can submit it. We can get the email today.
I'll make sure she does it right after.
Okay. It's not substantive information. It's more that we couldn't read this Sanborn map even though it was already submitted. And it may have been submitted in clean and hard copy. It just was hard to read in the digital. And then the other was a non-substantive correction to a title.
Right. We've corrected drawing.
It makes any difference.
Do you know which house on the Sanborn we're looking at?
It's yellow.
Yeah, yellow. It's not yellowed. Okay.
On the left, under the word, under the letter E on Avenue.
Oh, yeah. Okay. There.
Collating, copying, and highlighting. So we've got two out of three. The collating is, you'd be surprised how many people don't highlight, wouldn't highlight. Wouldn't surprise me if that was given to me because I'll highlight it and I'll put it in black and white copy and it won't come out.
Depends what they studied in elementary school.
Yes. Be good in arts and craft.
Okay. So this is showing us therefore lots of stuff in the rear yard. Oh, it's showing the connection to the garage.
Yeah, just that was the pre-existing non-compartment garage.
Okay, good. So then, do we have any other comments? Okay. Are there any speakers on this? So then, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, it's the standard condition for these, which is that the removal of the existing structure in excess of that shown on the BSA approved plans will void the special firm.
Understood.
Okay. So on that motion, motion to grant.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, it's the standard condition for these, which is that the removal of the existing structure in excess of that shown on the BSA approved plans will void the special firm.
Understood.
Okay. So on that motion, motion to grant.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 17215 BZ, 14645, 22nd Avenue, Queens.
Hi, Eric Palatnick. Another adjournment, but we're redesigning the home. And that's been part of, well, we're taking out, we're taking out the objections for Floria. We're taking out the objection for the two-family less than the minimum size. And we're going to be coming back to you just with a yard waiver. I know your board was, the board was still concerned about the yard waiver, but it was, I started getting the sense at the hearings that your concern with the yards is being exasperated by the abundance of variances that were being asked as well. So I'm having Mr. Resmussen amend some of his paperwork because he would ask for further studies. And that's about halfway done and the plans are being redesigned right now. There's a lot of conversation with ourselves and the client, and that was the delay. So I apologize for the delay and appreciate you giving us the time.
So what kind of time?
If the dates that, either July 25th would be good for us for the continued hearing or August 8th.
August 8th is probably better, right?
Yeah.
So August 8th, with the submission on July 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 23415 BZ, 122367 Street, Brooklyn.
Nancy Tassen of Tassen &amp; Awad. On behalf of the homeowner, now Al Tassen, I have with me today here Nina Tassen, who is an architect and who's working closely with the current architect that is responsible for the current drawings that we updated. And he'll be able to answer all of your concerns, particularly the architectural concerns that the board spoke about yesterday. We took notes and we are aware of the comments and he will be addressing them today. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, state your name, please.
Nina Tassen. Working closely with the current applicant of record.
Yeah, when you say that, what's that mean, working closely with?
We're working together on this.
So you work, so you work for the architect of record?
I don't work for the architect, no.
So is he the architect of record and you're the design architect?
You can say that, yes.
I can say that. What would I say if I was actually the client paying you?
That I'm the design architect and he's the applicant of record.
Okay.
So I've heard your comments from yesterday's review session and I'd like to discuss a few items to hopefully clarify some of your questions and concerns. I'd like to start off by discussing the 1986 application and then go into the 2007 alteration and its implications. Okay. So in 1986, an alteration application was filed only to eliminate an existing kitchen on the second floor, change that room into a bedroom, and change the use from an existing two-family to an existing one-family. The alteration application did not change the bulk of the structure. The application was approved and it resulted in a CVO that was issued in 1986. And just to clarify, because there was a comment also yesterday about misrepresentation of the front yard, that measurement of nine feet, four inches indicated on the approved plans is the measurement from the building face to the face of the stair. It is not indicated that it's the front yard. And there's also a note on the approved plans referencing the 1985 survey, which clearly identifies a front yard of three feet, five inches.
Ooh.
Moving on.
Wait, wait, wait. Slow down.
Okay.
So say that again, on the-
So you're looking at the 1986 approved plans?
Yes.
There's a dimension there from the front, the face of the building to the stair, and that's nine feet, four inches.
Yes.
And that's, that's not indicated as a front yard. However, there's a note there on the drawings that says to refer, well, not to refer, but it identifies the 1985 survey, which was submitted with this application.
Where's, where's the note?
Um, let me open it up. One second.
To the right, the left?
Yes, to the right.
I don't see it on the left.
To the right.
On the right, there's notes. Shown on plot plan. Information shown on plot plan per section, blah, blah, blah. I don't know. I don't see any.
Right. So it references the 1985 survey? Did you identify the note?
Can you point the, the thing that says note, information shown on-
Is it okay for you to approach manager? Can I? Put the plan?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not right here next to the top. It identifies the 1985 survey.
All right. So it's, in other words, it says there was a 1985 survey?
Yes.
Okay. So then, but it, but, so the nine foot four is taken to, I see where it's measured, but how do we know where it's to?
It's, well, it's going from the face of the building to the encroachment, to the, to the face of the, of the stair.
Okay. It's the face of the building to the stair that is off the, that's in the city street.
You can see it more clearly on the force report.
Yeah. Okay. But it, so that's the staircase that's actually sits on city property?
Yes.
Okay. So there is, and so the, we don't actually know where the property line is on these drawings, right?
But you do from the survey.
From the survey, you do, correct.
It's a three foot, five inch front yard.
Right. You're from the survey, but we don't have the survey on these drawings.
No, you have the survey.
No, we don't have it on these drawings.
On these particular drawings, no.
No.
But it's on, it's on the survey.
So DOB wouldn't have been aware that it's not property line, right? But anyway.
Well, it's submitted with the application, the survey.
So was the survey, the 1985 survey submitted with the application?
Yeah, it's referenced on the drawings. So it predates the drawings, that he based his drawings off the survey.
No, it's a, it's taken from a survey. It's referenced, but it doesn't mean it was submitted. You don't know if it was submitted unless it's stamped.
Well, we'll get into-
Unless it's one of the stamped approved by DOB, you don't know if it was submitted.
Well, the survey wouldn't be stamped and approved by the DOB?
No, it would be stamped as, you know, part of a set, right?
Well, I, when you submit it to the DOB, you don't submit it as a drawing. It's just a document that they have in their file with any other survey. I mean, the surveyor takes responsibility for that survey, not the-
But the architect takes responsibility and the DOB still stamps it.
The plans, not the survey. The surveyor is responsible for the survey.
The architect is responsible for the plan. All right. Never mind.
So it does show, on the 1986 plans, it shows that at the attic level, the attic sets back an additional six feet. So you would think the front yard at the attic level is nine feet, five inches.
Well, there's a structure there within that six feet. It's just not living space.
It's the second floor.
Um, what do you mean?
Because if I'm looking at the attic floor on the DOB plans?
Yes.
There's a setback of six feet and that looks like a terrace, which is created from the second floor roof.
Yes.
Right. So the attic was set back from the second floor and from the first floor.
Right. Okay. Yes, true. But again, there's no change to the bulk in this alteration.
It's just a point out what we then talk about later. And ditto, then on the second floor, you see the width of the building is 25 foot six to, you know, including the little curve around. So the width of the building at the street wall is 25 foot six, according to the drawing.
Uh huh. Okay. I'm going to get into all that.
Okay.
And then the other thing?
Yes.
Sorry. There's a little, a slight inconsistency between the plans and the survey in the left side yard.
In the left side yard?
Yeah. If you look at the survey, there's three step backs. There's a 10-inch side yard and then it becomes, I believe, a one-foot and then a two-foot, three-inch side yard.
Okay.
On the west side. And somehow throughout this, these constructions, that side, those larger side yards went away.
Well, on the basement level, you see the stepping. But on the first floor-
Well, the front, the basement level is really, um, yeah, I guess so. Right. On the first floor, you don't see it step back until the back.
Okay. May I just say, and I know-
You're going to go through this.
I'm going to go through it, but I'm just going to say, this is, these are hand drawings from 1985 and 1986. So you have to understand there's going to be a little bit of variation between what's on the plans and what's exists in real life. And it's inches that we're talking about here. I'm pretty sure they didn't alter it to add, you know, three inches on the side of the building in this, in alteration application. But I'll get into that.
Okay.
I'll get into it. Okay. Okay. So in 2007, the current owner filed, hired a design, registered design professional to file with the DOB an alteration application, and it was filed under standard plan examination protocol to horizontally and vertically enlarge the existing one-family structure and convert it from a one-family to a two-family dwelling. At this time, and I'm sorry, we didn't provide this earlier, we'd like to hand out the review comments from that review process.
May I approach?
Yeah, you can, you can give it to them. It's okay.
Make sure I have one. Thank you. Just Sarah, do you have one?
You can hand the rest to-
Yeah, just give it. Yeah, just give it. Sure, that's good. There's only one.
Hey, Lou.
Yeah?
Yeah. I'd like you to, I mean, you could skim through it obviously, but I'd like you to focus with me on items, objection numbers five, seven, and 10. So let's start with five. The objection was to indicate that the project meets height and setback requirements, indicate base plane elevation, and show all heights taken from this point and so on. So I know you received our base plane approval, and the base plane was approved at 60.03 in 2007 by Commissioner Gallagher.
It was a recon.
And that was based on the 85 survey that we were just looking at. Now, that survey, if you look at the date it was surveyed?
The 85 survey.
The 85 survey. There's a note below that says elevations added January 29, 2007. And we kept the surveyor consistent throughout here and we'll go through the difference in elevation. But as per my conversation with the surveyor, the two, the elevations added in 2007 were based on relative elevations, just to establish a point where we could submit reconsiderate or determination for zoning, I'm sorry, base plane approval at 60.03.
This original, this original survey had no elevation?
Had no elevations.
At all?
In 85, nope.
On a survey.
So then, what did you submit to?
The DOB?
No, yeah. You submitted this revised 85 survey?
In 2007, when we added the elevations.
And these elevations were relative to what?
And relative, that's what, that's the answer I'm getting from the survey, that it was relative and it's based on a random point.
Relative, you mean in terms of what datum?
Yeah.
Yeah, what day, so it's-
No datum, is what I'm saying.
No datum.
It's a random point. So just to establish a certain point, he had to give it a point at some level. Because that, that's what I got from the survey.
I know, I'll pick a point and it measures 60 feet off the point. Surveyors are supposed to do it off Brooklyn datum at the time.
I would agree with you, but it wasn't done in 85. I guess it was acceptable back in 2007, sorry, even in 2007.
Why didn't he do it in 2007? I mean, it's very difficult to correlate that ZRD-1 to, you know, what elevations are supposed to be submitted.
Right, but in 2007, this is the survey we submitted to the DOB to get that base plane approval. Regardless of what the elevations are on here, this is what it was based on. Regardless of what datum point was used, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, for instance, he says that the curb is at 50.
Correct.
So, it's gotta be based on something, it's not a, not based on nothing, 50 feet above something.
Right, so let's say it's based on, whatever it is it's based on, we took the survey to the DOB to get them to approve our base plane at 60.03. Can we agree on that?
Essentially, 10 feet above curb level.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
10 feet, all right, so now I'm looking at the updated survey. And you have, the top of the curb is being 67.77, and then you have the first floor elevation as 79.83.
Right, and the first floor elevation, well, that's not identified on the 85 survey, but let's just look at that curb level. For instance, you went from 50 to 67.16, and we know they didn't raise the curb 17 feet. So just based on that, you know that the elevation was changed, and the reason is, we used, and he notes it here, we use relative elevations in 2007 when we updated the 85 survey, and in 2012, he used a topographical datum, and then that was again changed to the NAVD when we asked for the updated survey.
Can, can we find out what, what the relative level was? He had to have done it for something, did he put a stick in the ground and decide that that was at 50 feet? That's the part I'm not understanding, it's like 50 feet above what?
What was the standard at that time DOB accepted when taking survey?
I'm not certain.
It was Brooklyn datum, I've never seen relative datum before.
But it's identified, I mean, just looking at the difference in elevations, at any point, not just the base plane, there's a difference of 17 feet.
Right.
Right? So regardless of what point he used, we know that these points didn't change 17 feet in elevation.
So just so I understand, what you're saying is that the elevation points that were shown in the revised survey of 1985 from the 2007 elevation...
They were no elevation in 85.
The 2000, the 1985 elevation was updated in 2007 with the elevation notes. And that differences of these elevation notes is the same as the updated survey of 2017?
The points themselves are the same, the numbers are different.
The numbers are different, but I'm saying the difference in this elevation from the curb level to the front, to the rear, to all of that is the same. It's just the numbers are different.
Yes, 17 foot difference in all.
In this one, you're using the Brooklyn NAVD, and that one, we don't know what it was, but the differences are the same.
Correct, exactly. And that's why we note on the plan 60.03 as the base plane slash 77.5, difference of 17 feet, as indicated everywhere else on every point on the survey.
Could you get the ZRD-1 updated?
That's gonna, we're not really, there's not much to do in the DOB right now until we, you know, resolve things here.
Wait, why do you want the ZRD-1 updated?
To show that the DOB concurs that whatever the new base plane is in NAVD-88 is okay, and it complies with whatever he is, he was trying to approve before.
So we have this 2017 survey that says it's in NAVD-88.
Yes.
Right, and the drawings are from 2007. So where they didn't use NAVD-88, so, and they used Brooklyn datum, so what in the world did they show on the...
This is the kind of stuff that happens when the, an application drags out 10, 15 years, I mean, there's gonna be changes.
Yeah, sure, but, a survey who uses no datum, okay.
But he notes it here, the surveyor notes it here. "Previous surveys of the above property dated September 6, 2012, July 20, 1985, and January 29, 2007, used topographical datum and relative elevations respectively, all the base plane info remains the same." He's acknowledging it as well, because I, we've discussed this issue of elevation differences.
Okay. So when you did your base plane calculations in 2007, were you the architect that did the base plane?
No, Albert Gimmell wasn't, he's no longer involved in the project.
Okay. All right, so when the base plane calculations were done, where do they show up on the zoning calculation sheet, height and setback? I don't see the base plane calculation.
Well, it just shows the base, in the section, it shows the base plane at 60.03, and it shows a building height of 29.0, 29 feet.
Above the base plane.
Right.
Yeah. No, I just don't see where the base plane calculations are.
But the thing is that the approved plans that DOB approved in 2007 permitted an extension in a non-compliant front yard.
Well, we're gonna get to that.
Okay, we're gonna get to it.
I just wanna establish base plane right now.
Okay.
And I, can we agree that it was...
Well, the thing that I have trouble with is, if you look at the CFO, the CFO describes the, the original CFO. It describes the lowest floor...
As a basement, I have.
As a basement, okay.
I'm gonna get to it.
Good.
All right, so objection number five, base plane, we saw Mr. Gallagher's approval and it was, and its acceptance on the objection sheet. So now, moving on to the issue of cellar versus basement. So as per the New York City Building Code and within the zoning text, a cellar is any portion of a building that is partly or wholly underground and having one-half or more of its clear height, measured from the finished floor to the finished ceiling below the base plane. Cellar shall not be counted in stories when measuring the height of the building. Okay, so the 85 survey, going back to that, identifies it as two and a half stories and a cellar. The plans that were approved in 86, although identify the lowest level as a basement, you could see clearly in his section that he's showing it as a cellar, it's completely below ground.
Which, in the 2007 drawing?
In the 2000, I'm sorry, in the 1985 drawing, which the CFO was based on.
So if I could just approach again? If you look here, it's entirely below grade, this is unexcavated. So he's showing it as a cellar by definition, but he's labeling it basement, it's an error on the...
So you think it was an error on the CFO?
Correct.
Even though.
Because clearly, the, that bottom level is entirely below grade. So it cannot be considered a basement unless you excavate that whole area out.
Okay, well, that in the rear is not really below grade, it's below the base plane.
But it's, that area is unexcavated.
That area is above grade, you know, about what I consider grade, it's, I think actually...
You walk right into the basement from the sidewalk.
You can't, you can't physically get into the basement from the sidewalk.
Well, through the garage.
Not even through the garage.
But still.
It's unexcavated entirely, you can see it.
No, wait a minute, you used to drive the car right in through the front.
No, no, there's a garage there, but that's also covered.
So the garage is physically separated from the building basement, there's no physical connection?
No physical connection, you can't go into the basement unless you go into the first floor and go down.
So even today, you have to park the car, come out onto the street level and take the stairs?
Yeah, you can't enter the cellar any, in any other way.
So you were reading the 1210 definition of cellar?
2014, actually, from the building code and the current zoning text, and the definition is, I mean, that hasn't changed over the years.
Yeah, so that's, uh, just a second. I think the definition of cellar didn't used to be from the base plane, it was below... It changed in 1993.
Prior to the filing of the 2007 application.
Yeah, but after the 1985 application. So a cellar, it says, except where a base plane is used to determine building height, is a space wholly or partly below curb level with more than one-half of its height. So I think, I'm not sure without doing research, I think the base plane was added in 93. So in 85, it was a cellar.
It was a basement, you mean?
No, in 85, that level, I mean, that level was a basement because it was above curb level. We know that, because there's a 10-foot difference between the top of that level and the curb. So it had to have been a basement by, according to the definition, the old definition, where it didn't rely on base plane.
So it wasn't an error on the CFO?
I don't think it was an error, it was a change in...
I don't know what the definition of cellar was before 1993.
Right, well, that's what I mean, without checking, but it used to, cellar used to be a much easier concept.
But I think base plane existed for some time.
Right, base planes existed, but incorporating it into the definition of cellar, I think is relatively new. But not sure, but anyway, that's one possible explanation.
But currently, it's a cellar, it's completely below grade.
Right, so by 2007...
As long as the base plane is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yes.
So what, okay, but that would account for it shifting in definition from a basement to a cellar as opposed to a mistake? Because you still have to review it under the current zoning, not under the prior zoning, okay.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to talk about the existing pre-enlargement conditions now, and look at objections number seven and 10. So number seven, verify use and substantiate legality of existing arrangement. To be used only when existing premises non-conforming, non-compliant with codes, acceptable or DOB plans. So, based on that objection and the acceptance of it, the 1986 application was used to substantiate legality of the existing non-compliant yards, front yard and side yards. Further down in objection 10, or, sorry, on the second sheet, stair beyond property line require DOT permit or provide previously approved DOB plans. So similarly, they use that to substantiate the legality of the structure that encroaches onto city property.
Okay.
Okay, so we know that these existed prior to the 85 application, and we've just established legality of that based on the 85, 86 application. All right, now the extent of the enlargement, what we were, what we did and how it affects all this. We did a horizontal and vertical enlargement, the horizontal enlargement was on the east side only, and it extended to a line with the furthest protruding points of the existing structure. So it did not reduce the side yard in any way. If you, I know you had a question yesterday regarding what was happening there with the curve and the stair and all that. If you look at the plan, actually, from 19...
Plan, which plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, 1986 DOB approved plans.
1986 plan, and which plan?
Looking at the first floor.
Okay.
So you have the stair, which is, which leads into a vestibule-type area and a closet there. So that, that structure, it's not just the stair, it's a structure and it leaves a side yard of 10 feet 2 inches.
Okay.
Okay, if you wanna look at the current plans that we submitted.
Well, wait a second. So it leads to a structure, but the second floor shows only that little closet, I guess, from the bedroom, that sits on top of the vestibule and the closet, but doesn't sit on top of the little staircase.
Right, but...
So there's a setback at the second floor, so the width of that second floor at the street line, street wall is 25 foot 6, not 29, at the street wall. And by street wall, I mean before the first setback, not aggregated with the street wall, but the first street wall.
Right, okay, I'm with you.
Okay.
So if you look at the, the plans that we've submitted.
The signed updated set.
The signed updated set, yes. So if you look at A08.
Oh wait, so now we're talking about your submission as opposed to the 2007 plans?
Yes, or you could look at the 2007, it's, but I think this clearly identifies the enlargement.
Okay.
So what we're adding on the first floor extends horizontally to the furthest points, not reducing the existing side yard.
Well, side yard here is listed as 9 feet 9 inches.
In the front, but in the back, it's 10.3, the building is slightly skewed, I mean...
How's it skewed?
Well, if you look at the...
It's not drawn skewed, by the way.
Oh, if you look at the...
You're making, you know, making a comment about a guy who does hand drawings, this computer, it's not skewed. Anyway.
But the dimension identifies 9.9 in the front, 10.3 in the back, that's, that's what the survey shows and confirms.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, not minimizing side yard in terms of the horizontal enlargement.
So just so I'm clear, as I'm looking at the 2017 survey, as you indicated, the width of the side yard increases in the rear, that to 10 foot 3.
To 10.3.
Yeah, so in the DOB approved plan from 1985, I forget, 85? The 10 foot 2 that's shown here, that's the width that would have been there from the rear, at the rear end of it, or is it at that location?
It could have been, or it looks like it was taken from the center, I mean...
Yeah. They didn't offer multiple, the survey might have done so.
It just, yeah, sorry.
The question I have is, in that case, if I'm looking at the signed updated plan, where it shows the front side yard width of 9 foot 9, was that existing in the DOB approved plan? I mean, that was the width in the front?
It was shown, I think, as 10 feet throughout.
Throughout, but, but in reality, did you widen that section?
No, 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 no.
So it's exactly carrying?
That, that, we went up to the extent of the existing structure, not beyond that, horizontally, okay? Now, vertically, we did extend all the way around vertically, including over, yeah.
Just, just with the side yard dimension.
Sure.
Your 2007 application shows, or whoever's 2007 application, shows the width of the side yard towards the front at 10 feet.
Right.
Whereas the plans that you submitted, the updated plan, show it at 9.9, so, right? So it's not showing either it's the property line or the building is skewed, right? It's assuming a 10-foot side yard all the way around, maybe it doesn't matter because it's buildings to remain in part. But just to say that, there's, there's an inconsistency.
There is, there absolutely is, we're showing you, and the surveyor is showing you what exists currently.
Okay.
So, back to the vertical enlargement, which was done all the way around, and it did occur over existing non-compliant yards. We agree with you on that point?
On the third floor.
On the third floor.
Over next, existing non-compliant which yards, front yard?
Front yard.
Front yard.
And as pointed out yesterday, I believe you guys began to discuss it, in zoning resolution section 54313, in R5 districts at the time, you were permitted to vertically enlarge a structure within an existing non-compliant front yard as long as, let me just read it to you here, "A vertical enlargement involving extension of the building walls facing a non-compliant yard, front yard is permitted, given that the portion of the building being enlarged complied with height and setback regulations." At the time, 30 feet for R5. So it was permitted at the time.
But it was rezoned already?
That's another...
Okay, that's a different, okay.
But in an R5, had this been an R5 at the time that was actually designed and built, which it wasn't...
Then it would have been permitted under the special permit, under, no, 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 it would have been...
No, 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 as of right.
Under the zoning.
Under the zoning.
Yes, yes.
But the, but you would have had to come, you would have still needed a special permit for the rear enlargement?
There's no issue with the rear enlargement.
No FAR waiver?
No, not at the time, we're 1.25 for R5.
Okay.
But you couldn't have increased the degree of not, you could vertically enlarge on top of the existing structure.
Yes.
But you couldn't have, on top of the existing structure, but you couldn't have pulled it further to the, to the side, right? It would allow an extrude, a vertical extrusion. But that's not what happened, right, it was vertical and a little bit.
You could say that, but I mean...
Well, no, I'm not just saying it, I'm observing it. If I extruded up, the building would have been 25 foot 6 inches wide at the front instead of 29, right? So there's that part in the corner that would have been allowed, right?
It was rounded, and then, I mean, there was a structure there, but as you pointed out, it was slightly set back.
Yeah, so that, that part where it was set back didn't exist, so that was not a vertical extrusion.
It existed on the first floor, but it was just like an awning structure. It wasn't like a livable space.
Well, you're relying on that for your non-compliant front yard, though. So it, I mean, just like comparing it to the house next door, you know, that's a question of whether they enclosed a porch in the front. You know, it's a question of whether you enclosed a porch in the front. And, you know, now you're saying that that's a non-compliant front yard, but when was that enclosed and is it legal that way? You know what I, you know what I mean? Or when it was originally built, was it just an open porch, which was later enclosed, and now you have a 3 foot 5 inch front yard? So, that's, that's a major question to me. I think the CFO helps you, the 198, because, well, it's almost like in 1985, the DOB is legalizing what's there.
Yes, that's the way I've been looking at it, once there's a CFO, they caught what they caught and didn't catch what they'd catch, and they didn't come back to rescind or ask for a modification, so that's the standing legal building, right? And so we moved from there, but so the standing legal building in 1985 didn't have that little corner extension, and it was only a staircase, it wasn't a porch, actually, it's only a stair, doesn't show on the second floor anything that extends over it to complete the square. So, right?
It doesn't show, yes.
That part wouldn't have been qualified even, so, but in an R4, could you have done this vertical extension? No.
In R4?
Yeah, isn't this an R4 something?
It was R5 at the time.
It wasn't, no, actually, it wasn't.
It was R4.
You're talking about when, when are you, the 2007 filing? Just to clarify that, by the way, because I think there's a little bit of confusion there.
Yeah.
When we filed the application in 2007, it was still an R5. During the review process, it was changed to R4-1.
Right.
Right, but by the time you got your permit, it was an R4.
By the time I got my approval and permit, it was an R4-1.
Right, and you're coming to us to legalize something under R4 zoning?
R4, oh, yes.
Under a special permit, under R4. And the special permit doesn't allow you to do enlargements in non-compliant front yards.
So we don't have any ability to waive those non-compliances?
It, you know, it could possibly be a variance, but you can't build in a non-compliant front yard and, under the special permit.
That, that's one of the reasons we're focusing on it so much, if it was just about side yard extensions?
Or rear yard.
Or rear yard extension?
Or FAR, but if, since it's front yard, it might, I don't know, it might have to be a variance.
I don't know if it could be a variance.
Well, with all this description, perhaps, or else you could, you know, set back the third floor. To provide the 10 feet. I believe the R4 requires 10 feet, right?
Yes.
Because the special permit doesn't provide that mechanism.
I, I understand what you're saying, what we were requesting was additional floor area and perimeter wall, I, nothing about front yard, because we know it's not within the board's authority to grant.
No, but the point is, if DOB didn't pick up some non-compliance about the front yard, it doesn't mean that we didn't.
No, no, I'm not saying...
So we're picking up a non-compliance in the front yard, and so we're not able to waive that, which means you go back with a less than corrected project.
No, also, just as a matter of course, we can't stamp plans that have non-compliances that we can't legalize, sorry, we can't stamp a plan that has...
Can you identify the non-compliance on your stamped plan and have the DOB resolve it? It's not that we're trying to get away with anything, it just then...
No, 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 no.
It's not that we're trying to get away with anything, it's just that it's a different discussion with them.
Everything that it has to comply with zoning, except for the things that we're waiving. Like, it's very specific. We can't just be like, oh, and these non-compliances go to DOB. I, I, no.
Yeah, no, we never, the only times that we, they're not even non-compliant. The only times that we have something where we refer to DOB on the drawings is if, for instance, there's a proposal to add a porch or a greenhouse, where DOB, it's DOB's call whether their interpretation is that the porch should be allowed, but we show it in as dashed, not as approved by us, right? And in this case, it's a clear non-compliance unless you want to go to DOB now and make an argument that it's somehow or other, I can't figure it out, but somehow or other grandfatherable, in which case you need a ZRD1 to handle that non-complying condition.
Even if DOB approved the plans and made mistakes themselves, that doesn't protect you.
We know that. That's why we're here today. Yeah, yeah, we understand.
No, but so that's why we're trying to put this into a full perspective, that sometimes because DOB, you know, had a lot of different concerns, like it often does on projects, they look at many, many things, they may not catch everything. Then we look at things, and there's many of us looking at the same set of drawings, so we may catch things the DOB didn't catch. That's what happens when you come here. So that's problem number major.
The front yard, the enlargement in the front yard.
Yes.
And plus complying with the perimeter wall height in the R4.
So now let's talk about perimeter wall height, yeah.
Right. So you guys pointed out yesterday in your review session that we're comparing our perimeter wall height to that of the adjacent property, to the peak.
To the peak of the roof.
Right. And that's true. I mean, what happened is we had a similar structure, and we'll talk about that when we get into character, but we had a similar structure to the one that we're comparing ourselves to, and all we did was blow off the gable and square things off, right?
You had, you mean your original building?
Yes, the original building was similar to that of the structure next door. And we just, we squared off the roof. It's now a flat roof as opposed to the gable next door. And that's, that was the only purpose of showing you the roof elevations.
Okay, but in an R4, that's not permitted.
In an R4, well, in an R5, again, this would have been a complying structure because we're using base plane, and it's 30 feet above the base plane, and 30 foot was my permitted height.
But you're showing 31, 31 feet 1 inch.
I am. I'm giving you the high point. If you take the average, it's 30 feet 8 inches. You're allowed 8 inches for insulation and roofing material.
No, because the parapet wall exceeds that.
Right, no, I'm showing you, if you want to go through the survey.
Yeah, let's do that.
The 2007 survey.
So we're looking at the updated survey.
I have it here. Okay, so we have four elevations here, one at each corner. The 10813, the 10853, the 10860, well, I'm sorry, .60, and 108.20. I use the highest elevation, but if you take the average of these four elevations, you're left at 30 feet 8 inches from the base plane elevation.
Well, usually the street wall is measured at the front. So I don't know if you take an average of the entire roof. You have to comply with the perimeter wall height. I mean, sometimes they think about the perimeter wall in the back, but usually it's concerned about what's on the front.
So, but let's say we took it at 108, just to make it easier.
Okay.
So how does that compare to the perimeter wall height of the adjoining structure?
Well, it's a discussion again about base plane. If we're looking at base plane, we're at 30 feet. The adjoining structure is at 30 feet before it starts to pitch. The structure next door is at 30 feet.
At the top of the pitch.
No, it's at 40 feet at the top of the pitch.
Well, it's showing an elevation here of 108.68.
The same as my roof elevation.
Right, so your roof is flat, and their pitch is at 108.68.
Right. So what's the question?
This is hard. I'm not understanding. It's supposed to be perimeter wall height.
The perimeter, if you look at the R4-1 regulations, the perimeter wall height is 25 feet. You start setting back at a maximum slope of 80 feet until you hit 35 feet. Everything added to that is now considered perimeter wall. I can show you the regulation.
No.
No.
Perimeter wall is measured to the sort of the street wall, and then the beginning of the slope is the maximum height, right? So now you're talking maximum height versus perimeter wall height.
I'm just going to show you something.
Where the slope of the roof begins.
Intersects the sidewall.
Yeah.
And then it starts to slope back at a certain slope.
I'm just going to... So this is Section 23631. After it speaks about extending beyond 25 feet, under degree pitch to 35 feet, the perimeter wall envelope extends vertically to apex point. So this now is the perimeter wall height.
Look at the definition of perimeter wall height. That's, yeah, okay, so we'll do that because we have access. All right, so...
No, I've looked at it before, you know? But, you know, you're required to start setting back at 25 feet.
Correct, yeah.
So where do you do that?
Your perimeter wall is at 31 feet.
It's right. So that's why we're seeking the special permit for perimeter wall.
Okay, but we can only do that if you're adjacent to a perimeter wall height of the same elevation.
And that's why I'm talking about base plane.
No, no, you can't, no, it's elevation. You can't say there are base planes down here and your base plane's up here.
But that's what's approved. That's what I based my structure on, the base plane approval. I went 30 feet from my base plane.
Right, you can't, I don't think you, but you're still, that adjacent roof, that 108.68 is the peak, correct? An adjacent home.
Yes.
I don't see how, that's not, their perimeter wall is down here.
Which is approximately 30 feet from their curb level where they measure their perimeter wall.
But they're going to have the same base plane, similar base plane to you. It's going to be somewhat elevated.
That's not established. I established my base plane.
Well, you can't, no, since your homes were created similarly, and they probably have a two-and-a-half-story-plus basement similar to what you used to have,
Yes.
then I don't see how their base plane would be at curb level. And your base plane would be 10 feet above that.
They don't have the same structure I do in the front yard.
Not now, but they did when they were first built.
We don't know that.
Sorry, what?
We don't know, the structure that I have in my front yard is a completely enclosed garage and cellar level. It's, we're at 10 feet up all the way back, all the way to the back. It's not just in the front stepping up. They're stepping up. We're 10 feet up all the way through. They're not 10 feet up all the way through.
Yeah, correct, but so what's very confusing about this is, this is a district where there's a straight street wall line, and then, and that's your perimeter wall. The other term is the maximum building height, or in areas where there's a sky exposure plane that you have to fit within the sky exposure plane. The vertical rise is to the top of that straight vertical, that is your perimeter wall height, after which you ascend by a sloping plane to reach your maximum building height. This part is not your perimeter wall. This is your perimeter wall.
But what I'm saying is, even if it's not, their perimeter wall measures 30 feet from wherever they start to measure. I start to measure 10 feet above them, and I'm at 30 feet. I'm using base plane.
I understand that you measure the perimeter wall against the base plane, but where do we have the information that their perimeter wall height?
It doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. We have a measure...
What do you mean it doesn't exist?
We don't know if they use base plane or not. They don't have any approvals for base plane. But we do have certificates of occupancy that identify their building height at 30 feet.
Their base plane, their perimeter wall height has to be determined in order for you to rely on it. In a typical street where you don't have one house way up on a hill and another one not on a hill or measuring off of a different place. Everyone's at the same grade, right? And you can't have your perimeter wall, your straight wall, higher than their straight wall in order to take advantage of this special permit that we have, right? So if the perimeter wall height in an R4 is 25 feet, and they have 27, you can go to 27 with our special permit, right? Otherwise, can't, right?
Where does base plane factor in, though, with that explanation?
The definition of a perimeter wall is measured off of the base plane, right? So you would have to establish where their base plane is in order to determine what the perimeter wall height is. Otherwise, you measure off of curb, or you actually have to have your surveyor go and actually measure the height.
We've done that. We measured the height of both properties next to us.
Well, okay, so the CFO for the adjacent property says 30 feet 3 inches.
Yes.
That's to the peak. That's to their perimeter wall.
That's, you're talking about the, which property? The west or west side?
You gave us a couple of CFOs.
I gave you one for the west side, and that 30.3 feet is, it's a flat roof. They have a shed roof. They don't have a peak roof.
Well, okay, so then did you give it to us for the other property?
No, I gave it to you for that property, because that's 30 feet 3 inches.
Those are the setback buildings with a garage on the first floor, and he's measuring the base plane from something between curb level, that street wall level, where the garage is. So...
And that's 30 feet, 30 feet 3 inches.
And the one, you gave us the CFO for the adjacent building on the right side?
On the right.
Which was your twin building?
Yes.
Right, which is the one that's on the survey.
They're both on the survey. Both elevations are on the survey. We gave you both CFOs.
I didn't see the other CFO. But anyway, if you go to the right-hand side, it gives a roof elevation of 108.68. That's not the perimeter wall elevation.
Okay.
And that's what you're relying on for your height, at 108.2.
So let's look on the other side.
That one has a roof height of 97.
I can match with either side, right?
Yeah, but then the other one has an elevation of 97.
And that's his perimeter wall height. And that, but, and my perimeter wall height is minus 10 feet of that, because I'm using base plane. I don't see why I wouldn't be permitted to.
I don't think that would, I don't see the logic in that.
Well, it's...
Wait a minute. So you're saying the perimeter wall height of the building to the left, which is at 97, right, which is the 97 foot, measured from the base plane. You're saying our base planes may differ, that if you were to use your base plane, then this is, it's less.
See, he's using a base plane of around 67. Say, the building to the left is, and he's, here they're using a base plane of 77. So there's a 10-foot difference between the two adjacent homes in terms of base plane. That's what they're arguing.
Yes, right.
That's to the left. To the right, it's a whole different story, because that building is elevated. Their base plane is elevated.
I don't know what they're, where they're measuring from, but if you want to just disregard that, I could use either building. So if we could just focus on the left one?
But the purpose of the regulations are for the bulk appearance of the neighborhood. It's to have buildings look in a certain manner.
Different, similar proportions.
Yes.
It's not going to help you with the, I mean, I understand you're using the base plane as a way to say, well, measuring from the base plane, my perimeter wall is higher, but it's really the physical appearance of it. So if you were to look at it from that point of view, the building to the left, even though has, is seemingly taller perimeter wall height wise, as you're saying, in appearance wise, it isn't, because your building is starting at a higher elevation.
And what I'm understanding is that you guys are basing this off appearance, not the actual...
That was the intent of the...
The zoning regulation.
The intent of that regulation was for that.
I understand what you're saying.
Technically, you could be right, but the intent was something else.
Technically, I'm not sure whether you're right, because that's not how we've seen this applied. So unless you wanted to turn this into a discussion about how you, what the measurement of the perimeter wall height is...
We actually have applied an actual elevation. You take an elevation of a perimeter wall. So say the perimeter wall to the right, the peak of the ridge is at 108. So the perimeter wall might be 10 feet below that, like 98.
But I'm looking at Section 76, I'm sorry, 73622 now. And there's no mention of height. It's talking, I'm sorry, not elevation. There's mention of height, not elevation.
All right, but the way we have applied it is, we have accepted elevations to line the buildings up.
Right, right. I understand that, but the way it's written here, it's talking about perimeter wall height, not elevations.
We have generally used elevations, not height.
Yeah.
Not an absolute height.
I think part of it is that what you're describing, we're not seeing the calculations visually. So for you, you know, in other words, how you measured above the base plane, how the surveyor measured to determine the height of these adjacent buildings, the height of the street wall, I mean, of the perimeter walls of these adjacent buildings, we're only seeing the surveyor measure to the roof peak in each case. That's all, that's what it's indicating on the survey, right? So if you wanted to show, to persuade us, that the perimeter wall height that you're measuring off of the base plane next door is X with the help of your surveyor, and Y on the other side, maybe that would make your case, but it's true that the whole point of these restricted perimeter wall heights is to keep them massing generally similar, right? And not encourage this whole disparate building typology, right?
I think this is a case of, you know, to paraphrase former general counsel, you know, goose be gander. It's if you're going to measure the height of your neighbor from curb, you measure your height from curb. If you're going to measure your height from base plane, you measure the height of your neighbor from base plane.
But from the same base plane?
Well, you can extrapolate. I mean, I don't see, I mean, Commissioner Chanda, you know, had a very detailed description of what she saw when she was on site. I don't see from these photos that you're on a hill, and it goes, you know, drops off very sharply for your neighbors, right? Because that's how, that's the situation where you would, that would be changed, right? If you're on this big hill, you measure from your base plane. Your neighbors would measure from curb. But I don't see that.
There is a 10-foot drop-off, and it's, but it's not gradual, it's drastic. Our building is the difference between our elevation and the adjacent properties. We're 10 feet up. There's no avoiding it.
Your neighbor on the right side is also 10 feet up. They seem to be on the same, plus the one to the right of that. So it seems like those guys were treated, where they were all traveling on the hill. It's only the ones to the left side looking at buildings.
If you were to make an argument, I would say you look to the buildings to your right.
Right, which is...
Those are the paired buildings that are built in the same period with the same kind of site plan issues and the configuration. Use that to determine what the perimeter wall height is of that abutting building to make the argument for you. Not the one to the left. It's the one to the right.
Right.
Okay, but so you're going to need to make the argument more clearly and graphically so that we can understand where the measurement is, because at this point, when I look to the building to the right, which is the only one you can look, you can't look at the one that's one house down, right?
Which, by the way, is exactly like ours.
Well, not exactly. It's a box, but it's not pulled so far forward as your box, so it is a different situation.
He made it up in the back. You could see, I have photos.
Okay, no, but in other words, you know, you have other issues. It's a box, so, okay. But you can't rely on that box, and we don't know how that box got there.
I understand.
Because they probably are not, didn't come here for a special permit.
Self-certified, actually.
Yeah. And so you're, so you can't measure it to the peak, because that's not what the definition of perimeter wall is, unless you show us really strongly otherwise. But that's not at all how the board has been interpreting the definition of perimeter wall throughout, as far as I can tell, the history of this special permit. So it always goes to the beginning of the slope, to the gable. Okay, so that one you need to, I really appreciate how much you've done to study up for today's hearing, because you did this really fast, just since knowing yesterday. But this subject needs more clarification. And then you also need to come up with a solution for that corner, the extrusion. solution for that corner, the, the extrusion.
Okay, I'd like to continue to talk about character and the rezoning, if that's, if you want to hear it, all right, okay. So we heard Vice Chair Shonda yesterday talk about the character of the neighborhood, and just to recap quickly, there were, it seems like there were three periods from the 1960s, 1940s, and 1910. Our property is one of five from the 1910, and as she stated, they all maintain the same building line and similar encroachments.
Do you have Sanborn maps that can establish, one is not, the 19, I'm talking something from 19, early 1900s that carries forward how that street, that, you know, the street wall was created?
I, I.
The street line was created.
Yeah, I, I asked for all the information that they had available, just a few blocks up, and the 1929 Sanborn was the only thing they could direct me to. And I don't know how much information you can actually get from a Sanborn. They, they don't really show a lot of detail. But just to continue, so similar building lines and encroachments, you also discussed the topography and how there's a 10-foot elevation difference between 66th and 60th.